Right, there were no attendance at the closed session, not at roll call.
Okay. And there were no reportable actions?
Reportable actions.
Okay, we're now going to adjourn to our regular meeting, and I'm gonna call that meeting to order, and I can have a roll call for City Council, please.
Councilmember RB here. Councilmember Brand.
Here.
Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Councilmember San Marco.
Here.
Councilmember MD.
Here.
Mayor Aspel.
Here. And join us in saluting our wonderful flag, and then please remain standing for a few moments of silent invocation for that gentleman that was, uh, didn't make it through the car accident today deceased. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have announcements. I want to get an announcement first. I was handed this by Renee. Friday, October, this Friday, we have from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. a senior health fair at Aviation Park Gym, free health screenings, flu shots, refreshment samples, community group, village, and raffle. So, if you want to show up, you don't have to be a senior to go, but it's always a fun event. And Martha, would you like to? Do you have any announcements or anything?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, Bill?
No, thanks.
Christian?
Yeah, District Three Community Meeting is this Thursday, Jefferson Elementary, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Our topic is going to be the homeless issue. Redondo Beach Police Department will be there, as well as members from PATH, that's People Assisting the Homeless. And this Saturday night, there's a candlelight vigil outside for domestic violence.
That's right. Okay, Steve?
I know.
No.
Okay, now we have another presentation for the outgoing commissioners. Thank you. Son, okay. Okay, now's the time, this is the time of year where we have new commissioners installed and some reappointed, and other commissioners that are termed out or moved on to other things. So, I'm gonna have everybody come up here. I don't know if you, anybody that RSVP'd, they're here? They're not? You have extra people here. Well, I've been just gonna call you up and come on up and get your, uh, your plaque and appreciation for all the work you've done. And the first one I'm having is Martha Barbie. So, she's termed out, not turned out, but she was selected for council. Historical commission. Reggie Thomas, come on up, October 1st, 2012. Stay up here. And Richard Fox, come on up, Richard. October 1st, 2012, September 30th. You have been, you are reappointed, you are back on it again, for the Public Works Commission. Paul Toparo. And she's been on everything. October 1st, 2012, to September 30th, 2016, on the, on the Public Arts Commission, and you will now be on the Planning Commission. So, you're gonna continue collecting these.
I am a serial commission.
I know you are. Michael Jackson, Harvard Commission, October 1st, 2012. Sandra Lillenwall, come on up. She, another one of our original Public Arts Commissioners. 30th, 2016. You're gonna miss it, aren't you? Karen Baum, come on up. Another Public Arts Commissioner, October 1st, 2012, September 30th. Public Arts Commissioners come in at one time, and now you're leaving all at one time, so I hope you enjoyed it, because we enjoy having you. And is there anybody else that we may have forgot? We're all good?
Oh, wait, there's...
You, oh! Late. Okay.
I think Renee's running. I think Renee's running. Go grab it. And this, and Paul Moses.
You don't RSVP, this is what happens. Go ahead, Paul, tell us what you were doing on the public art.
On the Public Arts Commission, the eight of us have pretty much made the commission for the last, the seven of us made the commission for the last eight years, worked to form our John Parsons Public Art Program and codify the percent for the arts ordinance, which funds public art in our city.
I don't know, did you guys just not RSVP? We can do stand-up here for a while. By the way, these seats, are you gonna stick around for the whole meeting? Oh, they will stay around here. So, we'll get a plaque, and, anyway, you wanna get, let's get a photo while we're, get a fake plaque, get over here. What's that?
Oh, wait, we have one more.
One more.
Mr. McTernan, how you doing? Okay. Is there anybody else coming in from the library or something like that? Okay. We were gonna say. Tell us about your experience on the recreation parks.
Parks was a very lovely experience. We had a chance to, uh, really get a chance to talk about, obviously, what's going on with Moby, and then also the dog park, which was amazing and riveting. So, that was very exciting.
All right, John McTernan on the Housing Authority, and you are, you're back. From Paul Moses and Georgeette Gatner, and you are, you are termed out now, correct? Oh, you are, you're doing it one more time, the other two years. Okay, so, this is a great cross-section of our community, and we really appreciate all the work you have done. And I know you're always out of town, so you're back in town now. Give them a hand, and this is, let's get a photo.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else shows up, we'll get them a plaque next week. Okay. Now, we have a blue folder. Let's see here, approval order of agenda, I think we're all good, right? And we have no agency recess, and blue folder items, they're all for L1, because I have a motion to add these, please.
Motion to receive.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
It's all passed. Okay, now's the consent calendar. It's items H1, get this right here, through H12. And these will be voted on in one motion unless somebody pulls them, but the public has the right to speak to any one of them. So, I'll start with Martha.
I don't need any of them pulled, thank you.
Okay, Bill?
No, thank you.
Christian?
No.
Steve?
No.
Laura?
No.
Okay, any of the public want to say anything about any of the consent calendar?
Nils Narenheim, District One, Redondo Beach. Just wanted to talk about, for a few minutes, about some of the leases on the Pier Plaza. Went through the leases there and saw that how great the, we have our own little silicon beach there on top of the Pier Plaza. A lot of little technology companies down there, providing great jobs down here, Redondo Beach. Wanted to know, actually from city staff, how much square footage we have down there in office space, and how much of the square footage we have in the waterfront, and how much we're gonna be losing. You know, we should really cradle and create that area where we can get great technology jobs, and create a real silicon beach-type environment. I believe the entire Pier Plaza is leased out, 95% of the harbor is leased out, so it would be really great to really get more office space down there. In addition to that, we also have the Chamber of Commerce debt that's down there, and they pay very cheap rent down there as compared to the other technology businesses, other office space businesses down there. And maybe we can get those leases all in par with each other. It's also great to know, too, because the traffic, we can reverse the traffic flow for these, instead of having the people drive out of Redondo Beach to their office space, we can have drive to Redondo Beach. So, just wanted to comment on that and see how, say how great it is that we have all these great office spaces that are fully leased down in the harbor on top of the Pier Plaza. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your staff has worked very hard to lease those. Okay, anybody else? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, come on now.
No, we're not at non-agenda, we're at consent.
Okay. Anybody else on the consent calendar? This is the consent calendar. We'll have non-agenda items and the main event coming up pretty soon. Okay, so...
Motion to approve consent.
There we go. All's in favor?
Second.
Not opposed. You gotta read anything?
Adopt by title only, resolution number CC-1610-095, a resolution to the City Council of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain property to Regal Executive Search LLC, a California Limited Liability Company, adopt by title only, resolution number CC-1610-096, a resolution of the City Council of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain property to Producto Studios LLC, a California Limited Liability Company, adopt by title only, resolution number CC-1610-097, a resolution to City Council of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain property to Cyphon Design, Inc., a California corporation. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now's the time for public participation. It's supposed to be 30 minutes, or this isn't discuss the waterfront or anything, this is anything that's not on the agenda. You got three minutes each, and, okay, these are written requests, so the first one is Eugene Solomon. And then Nils, and then Martin.
Hello, councilmembers, staff.
My name's Eugene Solomon, I live in District Two.
A couple weeks ago, I appeared before you asking what happened to a report from the staff that Councilman San Marco put in requesting some information about the Chamber of Commerce financials. It's been over four months, and that report still has not been produced. I made a request, a public records request, for the Bureau's financial reports, required by contract, at a minimum, biannually, by a certified public accountant. My public records request, I spoke to Lupe, and she said, "We can't find them. I don't know where they are." The report that was produced in July for the annual report, the biannual report that would have to be there from a certified public accountant, there was a note there that said the financials from the certified public accountant would be provided at a later date. This is fiduciary malpractice. Why are vendors continuing to receive money when they are not in compliance with city contracts? Why is the city continuing to pay vendors who do not comply with city contracts? Is it because of the special relationships that we have with the Chamber of Commerce? Chamber does some wonderful things, but they have to provide a detailed accounting of where the money is being spent. Where's the money being spent? Well, the CEO of the Chamber is here tonight. Her salary has gone up by more than 50% in the last eight years. The Chamber has a bank account that's gone from being about $700,000 to $1.3 million in about eight years. Check their Form 990 for that. So, where's all this extra money going except into their pockets and not really being all spent on tourism and marketing? Why is only about 50% or less being spent on tourism and marketing, and the rest of it going for salaries and benefits and administrative fees, and maybe the housing of a political action committee that lobbies the city? So, let's get these financial reports. It's either the clerk has it, or she doesn't. The city manager has required it be produced, or he hasn't. The Chamber's produced it, or they haven't. If they haven't, I would ask Mr. Brand, you're my councilman, to have the city suspend payments to the Chamber of Commerce until these reports are produced in compliance with the vendor contract. You have to comply with your contract. If you're not, suspend the payments. Thank you.
Thank you. Nils?
Nils Narenheim, District One. I am running for District One council seat next March, and I'm having a campaign kickoff, as well as a birthday party tomorrow night at Azure Mediterranean Grill. 6:30, we're gonna start, and I really want to thank all my fellow members of State of Riviera and Rescue Our Waterfront volunteers, and come on down. We're gonna talk about tonight's hearing, all the things, the great things we've done in the community. Azure Mediterranean Grill is actually in that mixed-use plaza at 1800 PCH, and right next to Ortega 120. They need the business. They opened up a couple months ago. Be great for the community to come down and support. It'll be really, really good to have as many people down there as possible to support a restaurant, a new restaurant down in South Redondo along PCH and a mixed-use plaza down there. Thank you very much, and I'll see you guys later tonight one more time.
It's a great restaurant. Okay, and Martin?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Martin Holmes from District One. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, a once-in-a-hundred-year opportunity to reimagine over 100 acres of prime waterfront real estate. There's a 50-acre power plant on the AES site, which is on the market today. There's 20 acres of Southern California Edison right-of-way, which will no longer be needed and will have to be repurposed. And then there is 36 acres of the harbor and pier, which is being proposed for redevelopment by Centracal. Mayor Aspel, you like to speak about the sins of our fathers. One of the greatest sins of our fathers is piecemeal development, individual projects that, on the surface, may look appealing, but in reality, lack the foresight needed to integrate nicely into our quiet beach town. The massive condominium development on our waterfront stole the downtown charm of Redondo Beach. It's unfortunate, but we must live with that. That does not mean we have to continue the trend. Two wrongs do not make a right. Right here, right now, tonight, you can take a stance against piecemeal development. We have not had a general plan update to our city in over 20 years, but this month, you recently approved a contract to begin a modest update. Wait for that general plan to be updated. Do not rush into a 99-year marriage with Centracal. You are perpetuating piecemeal development. You are driving blind. There is a logical, smart path forward. The steps are easy. Complete the general plan update. Execute the general plan update. Redevelop the harbor and pier area consistent with that general plan. Redevelop the power plant consistent with that general plan. Now, you have stopped piecemeal development. Now, you have performed your due diligence to ensure Redondo Beach of tomorrow is a success for residents, the city, and the developer. But instead, today, you have blindfolds on. You're like a horse, and Centracal is your jockey. You see money, you see a big prize at the end of the race. You see a free way to abdicate your responsibility and fix the sins of our fathers who neglected to maintain the parking structure. We are here today not because you all sing praises about this great Centracal design. No, we are instead here because you have been handed a bill for 18 million to 50 million to fix that parking structure, and you don't want to pay the bill. So, you have asked Centracal to pay it for you, and you are willing to sell your soul, you're willing to sell our harbor for 99 years. This is shameful and short-sighted, especially given the opportunity to shine and leave a true legacy in Redondo Beach, a legacy of smart, integrated, balanced development that works for everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm assuming this was meant to be for the public hearing, because you'd spoke about Centracal, so...
I mentioned it.
Okay, well, okay, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Joyce New, and I'm sorry I'm carrying all my stuff with me, because you have such a wonderful turnout this evening. There are dozens and dozens of people outside who are listening in, so congratulations on bringing in the community this evening. I, I wanted to talk about the issue, again, related to what Martin was saying, about conscientious and smart planning. And I'm afraid that the piecemeal approach has dominated in the city, and so I'm speaking now on behalf of rezoning, downzoning, the mixed-use properties that are slated to be, that are now zoned for pretty high-density mixed use. I urge you to reconsider this. This is going to impact our neighborhoods. The city of Torrance, recently, you might be happy to hear, actually held a meeting for those of us who are on Communa de Las Colinas and around that area, because the impact on us of the Legato project and the South One project are gonna be enormous. So, what happens in Redondo doesn't stay in Redondo, and we are all gonna be severely impacted unless the city of Redondo lives up to its responsibility to maintain a city where the flight attendants want to come, the crews come here, tourists come here, because we're not Manhattan Beach, we are not high-density, we have still a very family-friendly, elderly-friendly community, and I think many of us want to keep it that way, make it better, but keep it that way. So, I urge you to urgently consider rezoning, not wait. Let's look at what's going on, rezone and downzone mixed use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's try and keep it, and we're not gonna talk about Centracal until we get to the public hearing, okay?
This is a very fast call, then. Please ask the people that come to talk for what city are coming from. Please, thank you so much.
I will. Good point. Yeah, well, you know, well, so far, it's three out of four are Redondo, one's Torrance. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Amy Josephek. My neighbors and I have attended numerous meetings and hearings, both here and the Planning Commission.
What city do you live in? I told her I was gonna ask what cities your people...
Oh, Redondo Beach.
Go ahead.
Numerous meetings, hearings, Planning Commission and City Council, and strategic planning meetings, that talk about a vision of Redondo Beach that I believe you all ascribe to, that calls it what you want it to be, the most attractive seaside community. There's no reason or need to wait. Please reduce to your zoning density. There are too many parcels out there, up and down PCH, that will be awaiting development plans, that will be just as problematic as Legato has been and will continue to be. 35 units per acre is not a way to have an attractive seaside city. Turn your words into actions, because right now, they ring hollow. You put them on stickums on the wall, and it says "most attractive seaside city," but at 35 units per acre, that doesn't work. Please put your actions, take your words, put them into actions, make a vision for what the city can and should be, what this area can and should be. Please reduce your zoning density now.
Okay, thank you.
Laura Zahn, various individual, District Four. My definition of maximum density is deliberate misery.
Anybody else? That was short, it was good. Okay, anybody else? We're gonna move on to the public hearing, and first off, we will open the public hearing, but we need ex parte communications, so we all will start with Martha.
Let me, uh...
You wanna start first? Go ahead, Martin.
I think I gotta recuse myself.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So, most of you know I have to recuse myself from this, getting ready to enter into a quasi-judicial process, where you're supposed to come into it open-minded, and as almost all of you know, I've already made up my mind, I'm against the project. So, you know, quasi-judicial process requires you to be unbiased, so unfortunately, I have to recuse myself, that's, that's the rule of the law. But I'm not recusing myself from the lease negotiations, I'm also not recused from any discussion about the boat ramp design that might be coming to the council that was recently approved by the Harbor Commission if it gets appealed. So, I'm gonna, with that, go home and watch it with the rest of you on TV.
For the Dodger game.
Watching the Dodger game.
Yeah, you will. You'll be flipping back and forth in the Dodger game.
He always watches.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Doesn't even know what to walk off home on.
He doesn't know what to walk off home on, yeah. Okay, uh, okay, Martha.
Okay, regarding ex parte communications. I have met with the appellant, Mr. Jim Light. I met with him for about an hour this weekend. I have also met with, spoken on the phone with the applicant, Fred Bruning from Centracal, and I have also met with a myriad of interested residents and boaters discussing the issues before us today, and also with staff.
Christian?
Okay, yeah, I've spoken with residents, business owners, leaseholders, staff, the applicant, the appellant, boaters, and neighboring cities.
Steve?
Same thing, residents, business owners, staff, leaseholders.
Laura?
Uh, applicant, the, the, the appellant, the, everybody else. Residents, leaseholders, building, business owners, everybody, and staff, definitely all staff.
Yeah. Myself, I think it's safe to say we've spoken to everybody in this room, plus people out in the library, and every vendor, leaseholder, and everybody in the room. Okay. So, now, I need a motion to open the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is a public hearing to consider the appeal of the Harbor Commission decision to deny an appeal and sustain the decision of the Harbor Commission's certification of the final environmental impact report and water supply assessment, SCH 2014-061-071, file number 2014-04EIR001, and facts and findings in the statement overriding considerations. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing unless you deem that appropriate. Should I?
Might as well.
I think we're okay. Okay, I'll read. And mitigation monitoring and reporting program, conditional use permit, Harbor Commission design review, including sign review and landscape irrigation plans, coastal development permit, vesting tentative track map number 74201, for approximately 36 acres of development in the Redondo Beach Harbor pier area, and the consideration of the Recreation and Park Commission's recommendations related to seaside lagoon. Adopt by title only, resolution number CC-1610098, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redondo Beach, California, denying an appeal and sustaining the decision of the Harbor Commission certifying the final environmental impact report, CSH 2014061071, adopting the facts and findings, water supply assessment, statement of overriding considerations, and adopting a mitigation, mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the waterfront on property located with the coastal commercial CC zones and P Pro zone at Redondo Beach waterfront. Adopt by title only, resolution number CC-1610099, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redondo Beach, California, denying an appeal, sustaining the decision of the Harbor Commission, selecting the staff-recommended alternative described in final EIR, and granting the request for a conditional use permit, Harbor Commission design review, including sign review and landscape irrigation plans, coastal development permit, and a vesting tentative track map number 74207, to allow the construction of a coastal commercial project totaling 523,939 square feet of development on property located with the coastal commercial zone CC1, CC2, and CC3, and the Parks and Recreation Open Space Zone P Pro, located between the Portofino Way and Torrance Circle. And the recommendation is open the public hearing, which we just did, take testimony, close the public hearing, and let the council vote as they will. So, you, we have to discuss...
So, for process, my recommendation, and the planning staff's recommendation, is that the council follow the procedure that's set out. It's similar to what the council used in a recent public hearing regarding a car wash that was upheld on legal challenge, both at the trial court and the appellate court level. There is some slight modifications. It's important that of a matter of concern throughout the community, that both the appellant and applicant have a fair hearing before this body. I've spoken both to the appellant, Mr. Light, and the applicant, Mr. Bruning, and they indicated that they were, that these procedures were acceptable. The only modifications is that, unlike the car wash, the appellant, Mr. Light, will have a final rebuttal of half an hour in addition to the applicant. And unlike the car wash, we're not having, or my recommendation is you not have the speakers go based on for or against, because the concern being that if you are against, you may not get to be heard until much later than the people who are for. So, it's first come, first served, as to the people who put in a written request, so you should get a fair distribution of those, both in favor and opposed to the project. So, that would be my recommendation, that the council utilize those procedures, especially since both sides have agreed that that's a fair way to proceed.
So, we'll have Mr. Bruning go first, and what I'm gonna ask...
Well, actually, staff goes first. So, I, my recommendation is the council take a motion and approve these. These are just recommendations, that you'd have staff goes first. Go ahead.
I understand that, but what we're gonna ask is the council refrain from, just write down your questions, refrain from asking, whether it's staff, Mr. Bruning, or Mr. Light, any questions, and then we'll let the public speak, and then we'll come up with our questions. any questions, and then we'll let the public speak, and then we'll come up with our questions. So, write them down for the end. It's like we're in a jury. Okay, so-
And Mr. Mayor, I'll provide a little more clarification in my presentation right at the start.
So, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is the time and place for a public hearing on the Harbor Commission's decision to certify a final EIR and grant the land use entitlements for the waterfront project. As you'll see tonight, this project represents decades of master planning and community input. As far as administrative matters, the appeal hearing process this evening, which you just discussed, will begin with what you've already done, announcing the meeting, my presentation, item three, and then we'll move into the public testimony portion. The way that the testimony is designed, as agreed to by the applicant and appellant, is each will be getting sixty minutes. Then we'll have public testimony with your traditional three-minute limits. Following that, there is time, thirty-minute allocation for rebuttals by both the applicant and the appellant, and at that point, it goes back to the city council for questions and final motions. We can bring this back up at any point you want to this evening, so you can track where you're at. So, with that said, let me talk a little bit about the project. By way of background, the waterfront project is certainly not a new idea in the community. It's the culmination of, as I said before, decades of planning and analysis. The city council has listened to the community and been extremely strategic in setting policy and guiding our revitalization efforts. City council developed and approved guiding principles, a harbor business plan, and they acquired leaseholds, and they did all of this with the goal of not piecemealing, but developing a comprehensive project on land that was owned and controlled by the city, so that, in fact, you could unify and consolidate property for a comprehensive approach. The council then moved on to a RFP process, where the city council vetted various development potential partners, and approved the selection of CenterCal as the best qualified developer. The results of those efforts that I've just stated are the comprehensive waterfront revitalization project that you're considering this evening on appeal. I should note also that, in this process, that the Harbor Commission did not take their duty lightly, and the Harbor Commission conducted a series of one public workshop and four, a public hearing over four meetings to reach their decision and approve the project, including the actual certification of the final EIR. A little bit more background, and I need to kind of back up for a second, and remind all of us that there's, this has been a very extensive and very accommodating process. The public was involved with additional review and comment on the draft EIR. In fact, although only a forty-five-day review would have been required, the city provided sixty-three days for that process. The public was afforded opportunities to comment on the EIR at public workshops that were not mandated by the sequel guidelines or California environmental law. The public was also provided with responses to their comments over thirty days prior to the decision on the environmental impact report, in lieu of a requirement that we really only need notify public agencies ten days prior to a decision on the environmental certification. Throughout the EIR and the public hearing process, we have listened to the public, we have made meaningful changes, and, in fact, the staff recommended alternative approved by the Harbor Commission is a direct response to public comments and concerns about preserving and enhancing public views, retaining treasured assets such as the sport fishing pier, enhancing the public's experience when strolling on Main Street or accessing the site from Harbor Drive. These and many other project refinements are the result of our listening to your constituents. Ultimately, the final EIR and plan approved by the Harbor Commission represents the best project that balances our needs for revitalization within the physical, social, and economic constraints, which in, within we much must review this revitalization project. I believe, based on this slide, it's clear and readily apparent that some members of our community have a slightly narrower view of revitalization and don't necessarily understand that this project has objectives that balance greater public good with the realities of the site and the site's constraints. It is clear that the appellant and some members of our community have differing opinions about what the larger goals for this project should be. What is not clear is how those that have raised objection intend to accomplish the important public purpose of waterfront revitalization. The appeal raises an extensive list of issues that were thoroughly vetted and are mostly repeating prior assertions. Staff and our team of experts has responded to most, if not all, of these issues during the response to public comments and the public hearing process. After reviewing the appeal, we find that the appeal raises no new issues that have not been completely considered. However, we have provided responses to many of the assertions in a comprehensive response attached to your staff report. I might add that the city's responses are fact-based and based on expert analysis. Despite the lack of merit and standing with some of, some of the assertions made, staff did respond to a number of issues, and in tonight's presentation, we'll highlight a few of those. So, here are some of the items, including traffic, parking, views, public access, recreation, boat launch ramp requirements, and development intensity. I'll start off with traffic. With respect to traffic and allegations that the study and identified mitigation is inadequate or incomplete, staff should first comment that the traffic study and subsequent analysis was prepared by Farron Pierce, who's here this evening, is a recognized and accredited firm that actually prepared the city's 2010 circulation update to our general plan. Farron Pierce has a traffic model of our entire community that's entire, very predictive, and has been calibrated, and the results of their analysis, we believe, stand as full expert opinion on the traffic impacts of our project. Farron Pierce studied forty-one intersections throughout our community. They determined that the proposed project would significantly impact five intersections, and I should add one unsignaled intersection, just to be completely accurate, and those impacts could be significant unless proper traffic mitigation improvements were required. Farron Pierce, working with the city's traffic engineer, engineers, was able to identify traffic mitigation for all five plus one unsignaled intersection, and that mitigation was able to reduce the project impacts to less than significant. So let me briefly review those intersections and the improvements. Actually, we'll talk a little bit quickly about one other thing, and this is a street segment that is also part of your project. In particular, the street segment called Pacific Avenue or Harbor Drive Reconnection, and so I'll flip to that slide. After Farron Pierce studied the Harbor Drive Reconnection, their finding was that this street segment would be utilized as a local collector's street carrying approximately nine percent of the project trips. The analysis shows that this traffic is projected at thirty-one morning peak hour trips and seventy-four evening peak hour trips. That low level of utilization is consistent with the important project objective to reconnect and link the harbor and pier and to improve circulation and public access. While some spoke in opposition to the reconnection, believing that the roadway, bikeway, and pedestrian connection might adversely affect them, it became clear in conversations with the Coastal Commission and our emergency service providers that the public need to reconnect our harbor and pier was first and foremost paramount. We have shown you this before, but this is the Pacific Avenue Reconnection. It's a good illustration of the enhanced public view and access experience that will be provided once Harbor Drive is reconnected. Note that all modes, pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles will have a complete or living street experience on the reconnected Harbor Drive. In our evaluation, this component of the project is critical for public access to and along the water, completion of the California Coastal Trail, and for greatly improved public parking and improved public safety. With respect to other traffic improvements, the following slides detail the traffic mitigations required by the Harbor Commission in approving the project. Very quickly, walking through these, this slide is a good illustration of the intersection of PCH and Hurando. In order to mitigate the project trips, the mitigation measures require the development of two-through lanes for at least a half-block each direction at the Anita-Hurando-PCH intersection. This all can be accomplished with an existing street right-of-way through median narrowing and/or median removal. After mitigation, the level of service is mitigated to a non-significant impact. With respect to PCH and Catalina, just south of the Hurando intersection, the project requires the addition of an additional eastbound Catalina to northbound PCH turn lane, and a shared southbound and northbound Catalina right and left turn lane. All these improvements are accomplished with an existing right-of-way, and all reduce the level to less than significant. At PCH and Burrell Street, in the evening, we do have some congestion, as people know. The addition of a southbound right turn pocket, freeing up flow and allowing two-through southbound lanes, will fully mitigate the project's impact on this intersection. This will also require removal of three to four mature trees, but again, this improvement is done with an existing street and doesn't require acquisition of right-of-way. At PCH and Torrance Boulevard, one of our busier intersections, the project does two things. It would, it would pay a fair share to an improvement that we're about ready to begin construction of, and that is the northbound PCH turn, right turn lane at Torrance Boulevard in front of CVS. It would also add a designated right turn lane to the eastbound Torrance Boulevard street segment, thereby freeing up two-through lanes of traffic where currently obstruction occurs. All of this within existing right-of-way. And the further stout intersection that the project does require mitigation is a fair share contribution to the PCH southbound right turn lane, this is within the city of Torrance, again, bringing two-through lanes into service and avoiding the right turn lane obstruction of the southbound traffic. Despite the fact that all traffic could be mitigated to a less than significant level through those improvements that I've mentioned, the Harbor Commission did specify and require some additional project conditions. And I'll quickly walk you through these. I don't have a great illustration, but in particular, the Harbor-Hurando gateway and cycle track development does have a current condition where short turn pockets can lead to occasion when a vehicle will obstruct the, the single lane of Harbor Drive traffic as you head southbound. So, the Harbor Commission and recognition of this condition required that the turn pocket at Yacht Club Way, which is the most northern, most right turn off of Harbor Drive, be lengthened. That was actually already a project underway that the city is, is working on plans and specifications for. Then, further down the street, at Marina Way, which is the access point to Mall B, the Harbor Commission required that that turn pocket be lengthened and sufficient in width and turning design to accommodate future boat, boat trailer movement, as well as the storage capacity to keep cars out of the Harbor Drive southbound lane. At the, at the Pacific Avenue, let me, let me keep going on this. A little bit further down from the Marina Way entry, at Portofino Way, again, the right turn pocket would be lengthened, and just beyond that, because of the staff recommended alternative for entry to the Harbor Drive parking garage, the Harbor Commission recommended and required, through condition, the installation of a traffic signal, primarily to allow cars to cross the cycle track and enter the parking garage of the, of our project. So, the, the last improvement, next to last improvement, is an additional traffic signal was required by the Harbor Commission at the Pacific Avenue, Harbor Drive, and Public Market Confluence, where the bike path would cross from the west side of Harbor Drive to the east. The signal is not required for traffic volumes, it's required for safe crossing, and therefore, the Commission imposed a condition requiring a traffic signal crossing at that point for pedestrians in the bike path. The final, final improvements were two. They were the high-visibility crossings, similar to what you see now at Broadway and Torrance Boulevard, the activated high-visibility crossings for the mid-block, sidewalk crossing on Pacific Avenue, and the final crossing of the bike path near Torrance Boulevard, where the path crosses back to the west side of the street. So, these were all conditioned of the project. With respect to parking, we do need to point out several things. There's been an accusation from the appellant that, or several accusations regarding replacement parking, and while staff finds some of these interesting, the appellant's allegation is the project will not be successful, and, and that the project should also require additional parking. We find those two, two things very interesting, but from our standpoint, we're primarily concerned with parking the project to code and to the proper, the proper number of spaces based on parking analysis. The city commissioned a, our traffic firm, to perform a complete parking analysis using Urban Land Institute standards, which determined that the project requires twenty-one hundred and forty-seven spaces. The parking provided in this project is twenty-two hundred and ninety-six spaces, which is a hundred and forty-nine in excess of the studied demand. It also, it's also important to note that the surplus combined with other available parking will be used to offset any parking loss necessitated by street improvements and parking reconfigurations. The final design estimates are that no more than twenty-two spaces would be relocated for the Harbor Drive turn lanes that I just described and signal improvements, and that between fifteen and thirty spaces would be relocated for the Hurando, Hurando traffic mitigation. So, we clearly have adequate parking, and we have identified a source for that parking. Next item for discussion is public views and Measure G. I think it's important to understand, you know, what Measure G protects. There's been an allegation that the project significantly impacts protected public views and is in non-compliance with our certified coastal plan relative to view protection. The discussion on this slide correctly describes the criteria that must be used in view assessment. While there's a perception that substantial public views exist from Harbor Drive, the reality after analysis is that only partial degraded views are present. The project provides at least three major view corridors from Harbor Drive, most notably, it provides new public view opportunities of substantially higher quality than exist today, especially from the new Main Street, the new promenade, the new bridge, and from the Pacific Avenue Reconnection. While there's a perception that the project will significantly impact views from Zilliger Park, a further analysis from the lowest levels of the park and other vantage points shows that such impacts will not be caused by the project. Further, photos and exhibits submitted as evidence from the public were found after expert review to have gross exaggerations and misrepresentations. It's been my personal experience as far as administering view protection programs, having worked for a city that had its view ordinance contested to the California Supreme Court, that we are properly administering the view protection ordinance as prescribed by our coastal plan and coastal zoning. I have the next slide, we'll just show you an example of views from the upper level of Zilliger Park. You'll note, on the right-hand side of this slide, there is a landscape area and the, the large condominium structure. The orange, or orangish, structure would be the proposed Public Market Hall of this project. This next slide shows you from the lowest level of Zilliger Park, the impact of the project from public views in the park. At this lowest level, the project removes an existing Marina rental building, existing boat hoist, existing stored materials and other implements. To the left of the screen, to the right of the screen, it replaces, the Public Market Hall replaces that area. If you look at the, the blue, the blue line ocean water view- If you look at the blue line ocean water view, there's a benefit and a gain in this project. We feel that this is a fair representation of a minor and less-than-significant impact on a public view. The project really is all about public access and recreation. I think I talked about that at the start. There's been a number of different contentions made that the project would somehow degrade, restrict, or eliminate public recreation, and we find no merit in that assertion as all existing activities will be preserved or enhanced. The public has expressly commented that many of the new amenities, both in the water and landside, are highly desirable, including new guest docks, zero-depth hen launch entering, boat launch ramp, and hoist features, because a hoist is included with the new ramp facility, and other family-related improvements, events, and activities. All commercial recreation activities will continue and will be enhanced. One of the most important aspects of the project is that it provides a significant enhancement to the quality of the public open space on this site, basically taking parking lots and turning them to promenades. This is certainly an enhancement. Quickly on the boat launch, as that is a separate application, but it was subject to environmental certification in the EIR that you're considering tonight, is that the boat launch facility was discussed at two public workshops and a Harbor Commission meeting. Actually, two Harbor Commission meetings in February and March 2016. The Mall B location was discussed as part of all four Harbor Commission meetings during the EIR review process. And the Mall B launch ramp was studied in the final EIR. In fact, refinements to the site plan were made to address public safety, comments received, and inputs from the Harbor Commission and Harbor Patrol. Those refinements were made to enhance safety and address any issues brought forward by the proposed launch facility. It is our evaluation that refinements do not create any new or increased environmental impacts. This slide quickly shows you the Mall B public boat launch ramp design and the modifications made in response to any safety concerns raised, as well as some of the public comments and Commission comments. The last...one of the last items I want to talk about is what is the appropriate development intensity for this property? And this has been a subject of long debate. There is a continuing contention that this project is out of scale and character with the community. Some people call it supersized and not compatible with surrounding development. However, staff can find no evidence to support those allocations as the project has been modeled against surrounding structures, including high-density residential, multi-story hotels, and other nearby features. As found by the Harbor Commission, the project is in full conformity with the adopted and voter-approved height restrictions, and the project in several cases does not propose to develop to the maximum standards. For example, the project could have up to 50% of the building south of the Seaside Lagoon as two-story structures. In reality, the project proposes 70% of the building south of the lagoon as one story. Another important point is that the project constructs less than 78.5% of the allowable development within the waterfront. This leaves about 77,000 square feet for additional development. It is important to understand that the city already minimized the allowable development in the process of responding to public concerns during the long planning process for the future development of this area. I was here with the city when previous development was unlimited. There was no development cap and there was no FAR limit in the zoning for many years. The development cap, based on at least an analysis of anticipated or possible development at that time, was expected to be at least 1.6 million square feet when we started the Harbor Pier zoning amendment process to start reducing and considering what was an appropriate level of development for a waterfront. From that 1.6 million square feet, a reduced recommendation of 750,000 square feet came forward. And there was actually a specific plan created for the waterfront, the plan for 750,000 square feet of net new development. Clearly, still of concern to the community, the Planning Commission then reduced allowable development under this process to 525,000 square feet. That Planning Commission recommendation went to the City Council that then reduced development to 400,000 square feet through a public process. When you look at the track record and history of the city, it has been to consistently reduce density, development, and height limits throughout our waterfront area. Let me go to the next page real quickly. Well, let's just stick here for a second. Our waterfront has an overall limit of .35 floor area ratio. Basically, a little over a third of the entire site could be developed in terms of square footage. Individual sites can go up to a .65 FAR, which is very consistent with other local downtowns. For example, just nearby communities, Hermosa Beach allows 1.0 FAR and Manhattan Beach allows a 1.5 FAR, drastically greater than our waterfront allowances under the current zoning and general plan requirements. Given all of these limitations, including our low FAR, in fact, when the Coastal Commission certified our coastal plan, the motion maker from the Commission said, "I'm all in favor of this. It has such a surprisingly low development capacity." And that was actually the motion maker of a Coastal Commission that made that. Given these limitations, and especially the FAR imposed on our waterfront, I don't think it's ever likely that we'll see a downtown because it simply doesn't allow that kind of intensity. But what we feel is possible and what we feel the project on appeal provides is really a waterfront village atmosphere. Downtown has much more intensity and activity. This level of development proposed by the project is in fact a waterfront village designed in community character and one for our children and families that is reasonably designed, reasonably active, and will provide benefits to our residents and visitors alike. And in some closing remarks here, it's no doubt we've had decades of planning process. We've done a good job of strategically planning, assembling, and entitling the land for future development. It is clear that the public input has been received and been listened to and responded to. We have adjusted all of our standards and requirements. We think that the proposed project is scaled, adjusted, and modified as a result of public input. And we believe that we have extensively studied the impacts of this project and incorporated mitigation wherever possible. I think this project is one that achieves the balance between physical, social, and economic constraints and realities and is right-sized for the community. So with that, staff is recommending you deny the appeal this evening and adopt the two recommended resolutions.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Okay, I think it's time for Mr. Bruny?
No, it's time for Mr. Light.
Mr. Light, you go. Sorry, you go first. There you go. I have it right here, all right?
And just to...it's approximately seven o'clock. It's 60 minutes. The clerk will keep the official time once you begin and will hold up for your convenience a 10-minute and a 5-minute, just so that we're all good, so...
Those cards? Okay. You're up, go ahead.
Okay, Jim Light, District 1, Redondo Beach, and also President of Building a Better Redondo. First off, thank you for hearing this appeal tonight and thank you for giving it sufficient time to get into a few of the details. This is a huge development, more than doubling commercial development in the harbor and the pier area. In the harbor area alone, if you include the Behemoth 45-foot, five-level parking structure, the project represents a 10x increase compared to what is on the ground today. And if successful, the project would more than double traffic in this area served by very tiny streets. So it is important to hear the shortcomings of the project in more than the usual three-minute soundbites that are afforded to the public. So I appreciate the time. But I'm going to dive into some fairly detailed comments based on, you know, what you have to cover under CEQA and everything like that. But before I do that, let's look at the real reasons we're at this point today. I can boil it down to three primary reasons. The first is the project is overwhelming for such a confined area of the harbor. It is so huge that every recreational use, especially coastal-dependent uses, is negatively impacted, and the project is not balanced. And despite what we heard the head of planning say, yeah, 78.5% of the development cap we all approved in Measure G, but it's crammed into just 22% of the landmass of the harbor. Second, the vast majority of the substantive concerns brought up by the engaged public over the past three years have largely been ignored. And nothing stirs up the public like feeling ignored and bulldozed over and that our input doesn't matter in the end. We've not seen any real compromise and we've experienced a lot of it's my way or the highway type of response. And third, it has become very apparent that the city has become a biased advocate for the project. And when the data does not support their predetermined conclusions that they want, the city relies on hiding information from the public, manipulating data. And when that is not enough, even fabricating data that's not really...hasn't really been gathered. So while the process dictates that this discussion focus on CEQA, the Coastal Act, and city regulations, the real reason we are all here is the lack of balance, the lack of compromise, and the lack of trust that's built up over the last three years. So with that, I'll dive into my briefing. First, a disclaimer. The flaws in the waterfront project and the supporting documents and the Harbor Commission actions are too voluminous and complex to cover in just a one-hour briefing. So there's details that have been filed over the last three years from BBR, myself, on the DEIR, the FEIR, the Harbor Appeal Submission, and other reference documents, as well as a ton of inputs from the public. So let's go to the first slide. So first off, to start diving into the details, the project description and the requirements are incomplete and have been throughout the process. Examples of that, the replacement of parking lost on Harando is unspecified. You can't...in CEQA, you can't just say, "We'll fix it later at a one-to-one ratio." You have to show how you fix it because you may be suplanning some other use and creating another impact down the road that was not covered with the public. Second, extending the turn pockets along southbound Harbor Drive is left undefined. We've not seen the details on that to assess it. The expansion would reduce parking spaces, as mentioned by Aaron. And the replacement parking, again, is not addressed. We don't know where that parking is going to be moved. And the public can't assess whether they're making enough extension to reduce blockages, and there's no analysis to show that to the public. The Mall B boat ramp impacts could not be assessed as the design has continued to evolve since the EIR, the final EIR, and the actions related to this appeal were approved. And those impacts continue to eat away at existing uses. There was no evaluation of that in the final EIR. And then there's broad options with important impacts that are still open. Although the sport fishing pier per the EIR could still be removed if the city could change its mind at a later date. The reduction in boat slips in Basin 3 is still open. And when you combine that with the lost boat slips in Mall B, we can't...we don't have a way of evaluating what that total impact is because it's not being presented to the public. So the project has not been defined sufficiently to reasonably evaluate... for the public to reasonably evaluate the impacts. Next slide, please. And here's the example. When we first saw this, the DEIR came out. There was no way we were going to have a Mall B boat ramp. It wasn't even evaluated. They threw it out because it was such a great impact. Then all of a sudden, in the final EIR, we saw the version at the top there. And then just last week, October 10th, saw a totally different configuration for the Mall B boat ramp with different impacts. So there's no way the public could have evaluated the impacts of Mall B as it changed throughout the life of this project. Next slide. And this just shows what's happened. So as you went from the DEIR to the final EIR, you saw slips removed, you saw parking impacted, and you saw that parking expanded in the current public open space. And by October 10th, we saw even more parking was impacted. A total of 39 slips were removed, so even more slips were removed. And then although it's not final, we still don't know what's going to happen to Moonstone Park and the Outrigger Canoe Club area. All of a sudden, Moonstone Park got crushed into a smaller area, and they tried to make it up by putting a walkway on top of the rocks on the breakwater. Well, in the Mall B master plan, you all rejected that as an option. So this would violate the Mall B master plan that you all approved. Next slide. So next topic, the EIR should have been recirculated. CEQA requires that when substantive new information is added or the DEIR is inadequate for meaningful public review, that it has to be recirculated. The final EIR has had significant changes in information that was unavailable or contradicted in the DEIR. We finally got a weekend traffic analysis in the final EIR. But there were insufficient details to really understand and dive in to what the city was doing with that analysis. The reconfiguration of the new parking structure, that created new traffic and safety impacts that we don't know. There's no analysis of the new stoplight at that...the new exit from the parking structure. And then the Mall B boat ramp location. It was eliminated as an alternative in the DEIR and not adequately defined in the final EIR. We're still seeing changes today. So those are some significant changes that have occurred since the DEIR that the public saw for the first time or is still seeing as we go past the final EIR. And finally, the DEIR itself represented over 100 alternatives, combinations, and permutations of boat ramp locations, land use alternatives, the inclusion of the sport fishing pier or not, and the potential of reduction of slips in Basin 3. The combinations and permutations were too complex and too varied for the public to understand what the potential impacts might be because there was so much variability in what the final outcome could have been. So finally, we did start narrowing down in the final EIR, even though there were substantive changes, but there wasn't sufficient time to review everything. The project wasn't defined sufficiently to reasonably evaluate the impacts, which is a violation of CEQA. Next, the final EIR format was very difficult to review. I don't know how many of the public tried to do it, but it relies heavily on cross-referencing. Just one responds to one of the inputs I put in on the DEIR, referenced an earlier statement in the final EIR. That referenced another statement in the final EIR, and then that referenced the DEIR. So to find what they were really trying to respond to in the answer to my question, you had to go through four different places. And we don't have printed copies like you all do. We're working off our laptops at home. Then you've got to find your way all the way back to the question that you were originally seeing what they were answering. So it's very complex. We didn't see that in Heart of the City, which was, you know, the predecessor to this. It was written like a book and you could follow from beginning to end what they were saying. This is so cross-referenced, it's very difficult to put together for the public. And it's a deterrent to good public understanding and comment. The city of Hermosa Beach has a format specifically defined so that it's not too complex for the public to read. The final EIR should be rewritten to facilitate easy comprehension and understanding by the public. Next slide. The final EIR, the DEIR, has ignored significant impacts. There's a dramatic loss of 85% of the views from Harbor Drive that are called insignificant. And they use convenient viewpoints to disguise the real impacts. Insufficient parking, and I'll go into some of these in more detail. Recreational uses in the Center Cal area, overflow parking from Mall B, replacement of Harando parking, and replacement of parking displaced by unspecified changes on the Harbor Drive turn pockets are all left up to the public's imagination. But there's not enough space for them all, and I'll show that in a few slides. And then there's inadequate analysis of traffic impacts. They ignored the inclusion of significant circulation constraints. And I'll show that in more detail, so I won't cover these here. So the final EIR is insufficient as it failed to fully identify the impacts and to evaluate mitigations against those impacts that it never even raised. Next slide. Then there's the failure to minimize impacts and balance objectives. CEQA requires that the agency minimize impacts and balance competing public objectives. In this case, the proposed project forces all the impacts on existing and new coastal-dependent recreational uses. dependent recreational uses. And this is just a partial list. The paving over of Seaside Lagoon for a project access road and shared parking. The city staff calls it access to the park, but we've had access to that park since it was built. We don't need a road over it to access it. The road is being put there for access for the shoppers and the people coming down and visit, visiting the mall. The move of boat ramp to Mole B. We've been discussing Mole C and D since two thousand and seven. All of a sudden, at the last minute, all of a sudden, Mole B jumps up with no public workshops. Yeah, it was covered when we get three minutes to speak in a Harbor Commission meeting, but there were no public workshops on Mole B. The elimination of convenient usable parking for recreational uses. You want to take your SUP down there. Now they're saying you've got to drop it off, put it in some mythical locker that's undefined, then try to find parking somewhere in a parking structure if it's not full, and then walk back and go get your board. It's not convenient or conducive. I challenge you to find another SUP place that requires you to park in a parking garage and drop off your stuff in a locker before you even get to go to the water. And how are you going to administer that? If someone hogs it up for three days, what are you going to do to them? There's no details for the public to assess on that. It's, it's going to deter people from using that facility. It concentrates recreational uses into shared smaller areas. We're putting toddlers right next to kayakers and stand-up paddleboarders in a much smaller park. We're, we're putting Mole B to have a boat ramp now, to have the Outrigger Canoe Club, and to have a public park. So we're taking all these uses that have been spread out over the harbor, and we're cramming them together to make room for commercial development that's not coastal dependent. There's a dangerous design of the bike path with three perpendicular crossings, and I'll get into that. We just spent, I think, the final cost with overruns and stuff, five million bucks to move the bike, the bike track to the west side of Harbor Drive. Now we're recreating what was the reason we did that, but making it worse, because instead of two crossings, now we, going just north, we have three crossings going both directions. So we've increased the hazards in using the bike path. We're, thank you. We're eliminating boat slips. There's inadequate design of the boat ramp and consider, they're considering a reservation system. What place in the United States requires you to reserve, you're putting your trailer boat in the water? That's just ridiculous. So somebody's going to drive from inland, they're going to get here and go, "Oh, I didn't know there's a reservation system. You're out of here." I don't think that's going to fly too well. It's just, it's just ridiculous. It's, it's like we're creating these, these ludicrous solutions to problems that shouldn't resist, exist if we designed these facilities correctly. And then we've got the urban canyon on Harbor Drive that dramatically blocks the harbor and ocean views from the new bike track that we just spent a lot of money on, and, and is really daunting from how you feel while you're in that environment. Next slide. Let's see, the development cap interpretation. The city staff has recently written an opinion that conveniently excludes parking structures from that assessment. Yet the ballot language talked about limiting total development, not, not total development minus parking structures. And the Measure G zoning says that there shall, you can't exceed four hundred thousand square feet of floor area. Now that the zoning, if you dig into the definitions, does define floor area gross, but it never defines floor area. So there's nothing that was before the voters that would cause you to think, "I'm voting for a four hundred thousand square foot cap, and I know that that allows the city to put in however much parking structure they want." There's nothing in the record for that. And in fact, if you look at the definition of floor area gross, it includes the term floor area. So it's ludicrous to assume that floor area excludes parking structures when they use floor area to define gross floor area, and that's where they define the exclusion of parking structures. So the city has used gross floor area all throughout Measure, Measure G, the zoning that surrounds this, but they never used it in respect to the development cap. So since Measure G was approved by the voters, the interpretation should be about the intent of the voters, not a recent interpretation of city staff. So new parking structures should be included in the development cap assessment. Next slide, please. Parking. Parking replacement for losses on Harando, park, and potential losses for the, required by the CUP for the future turnpocket extensions and Mole B overflow parking are not definitized. Parking for recreational uses in the Center Cal area are not included in the parking analysis. And parking requirements for Mole B boat ramp, current boat slips, Moonstone Park, the new hand-launched boat ramp at the Mole B boat ramp, and the Outrigger Canoe Club are not adequately assessed. There is no parking demand study for the future condition on Mole B. So the reduction of parking for coastal dependent uses is an access issue that violates the California Coastal Act. Next slide. So this shows from the final EIR, the assessment of parking demand in the Center Cal area. The only recreational use represented is boat slips at sixty units with forty-five parking spaces. There's no other recreational use considered in that parking demand. Next slide. Yet the city shows, records that in 2015, the peak use at Seaside Lagoon, they only have weekly averages, but if you average it for the peak weeks, was one thousand two hundred eighteen users per day. And that excludes day camps and events. The city has historically allocated sixty spaces for sport fishing passengers, fifty spaces for Basin Three boat slips, two hundred and seven spaces for Seaside Lagoon, but that included a stipulation for overflow parking for Lagoon Peak periods, and sixty-seven trailer spaces for the boathoist. The DEIR estimated there's about fifty users per day, per weekend day for the small hand-launched boat ramp. Beachgoers, bicyclists, fishermen, pier movie and band event users also use current parking in the project baron accounted for anywhere. The city's response was that commercial uses account for these parking needs. Next slide. Well, that doesn't jive with what we see out there today. Weekends all year long have regularly demonstrated parking lots at or near capacity. The doubling of the commercial uses without substantive parking increase will routinely saturate parking. We're only increasing parking by about eight percent in the Center Cal area, but we're more than doubling the commercial development. And this would, the access to coastal dependent recreational uses would be significantly impacted. This impact is totally ignored in the final EIR. And then I've supplied pictures from different dates. That's February twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen. You can see the harbor area parking lot is, is reaching capacity there. Next slide. And this shows different dates. March thirteenth, which was the kite parade. May thirtieth, pier parking gridlock. Seaside Lagoon parking at one o'clock in the afternoon on eighteen June. And then again, the pier parking structure on the thirteenth of March. And every Friday, you see the parking lot in front of Ruby's filling up for the, the car show. Mole B parking. Public records requests revealed that there was no parking demand assessment for the Mole B after the, the proposed move of the boat ramp there. The FEIR tries to rely on a sixteen-year-old parking study and twenty-two random images taken over twenty-four years with no time of day indicated with them, and sometimes no exact date. Some of them said summer, you know, of this year, to justify that, that Mole B can absorb the parking. I mean, that's, that's where you're trying to fabricate data that just isn't there. You can't use that to reliably predict anything. The proposed trailer parking is insufficient for a, for the proposed two-lane boat ramp. It's less than the trailer parking provided today. And data from Cabrillo Ramp shows that we'd have somewhere between fifty-nine and sixty-some days per year, mostly weekends, where we would, we would be in overflow conditions. The proposed parking decreases usable public parkland and outrigger space. The proposed ramp would include a hand launch, hand launch of human-powered boats, creating even more demand, and again, the DEIR estimated fifty users per weekend day. Lana Keela has submitted that they need fifty-four to seventy-eight parking spaces when they have practice in the evenings on weekdays and weekend mornings for six months out of the year. And the CUP also requires additional thirty off-site parking for trailers, thirty for cars, but no, no, no location is specified. If you've got to park your, your boat, your boat trailer, you know, half a mile away, that's going to be a significant impact to the queuing on the ramp and its usability. Next slide. And here's, here's picture during that Lana Keela submitted, the left side is Lana Keela submitted, showing how much Mole B parking is used during their practices. And the right one, I was down at my boat on four-twenty on, I think that says eleven September, that was a Sunday, and you can see Mole B was packed then. And when I did the count of open spaces in the rest of the harbor and what would have been, or the Mole B, and what would be taken up by the boat ramp, there was insufficient capacity to house even these cars. And it was primarily fishermen and families that were out on the rocks there. Next slide. There's undefined parking replacement. I've said this over and over again. The EIR states that lost parking from Harando will be replaced one-to-one, but it doesn't say where. It mentions maybe the Triton site, but who's going to walk half a mile? If you were going to Harando to park, you'd probably go into the beach or somewhere on that end of the harbor. Now you've got to walk half a mile. Why is it we make recreational people, users, walk a half a mile? But if you want to park at the, if you want to go to the Center Cal thing, when we brought up off-site parking for Center Cal, he said that wouldn't work. That wouldn't meet my, my, you know, our customers' needs. Why is it okay for recreational people to have to walk half a mile, but not for shoppers? And that starts to show the bias that's crept into these analyses. The CUP says turnpockets will be extended, but it doesn't define how much, where parking will be replaced. CUP talks about overflow allocation of the ramps, but the locate, from the boat ramp, but it's not specified. The Triton parking lot is already allocated to the Shade Hotel for employee, and for employee parking for Cheesecake Factory. So there's insufficient capacity for all these additional uses. The Triton parking lot is over half a mile from Harando, as I said. It's not a realistic replacement parking. And so the public doesn't even know how to assess whether the impact has been mitigated or not. All of these undefined requirements are in fact, they in fact drive significant impacts on parking, but the DEIR and FEIR are silent on a significant impact. And CEQA does not allow you to define a mitigation at a later date. The public needs to know now how you're going to mitigate that. Just saying, "Trust me," is not a CEQA compliant response. Next slide. So this shows the unaccounted parking structure. And I may be off in a few of these numbers, but when you look at the bulk of these, it's, it's substantial. Somewhere on the order of near, nearly six hundred parking spaces are unaccounted for today, based on whether they just ignored the use, or whether they stated somewhere down the road, "We'll find a place for the, that overflow parking." Next slide. And, and the parking analysis fails to look at future demands. For example, in Mole B, the city relies, tries to rely on decreasing boat utilization, but they ignore that we've been in the biggest recession we've been in for decades that it has at the boating industry very badly. But if you take the two-year average, and you have to, because you get boat registrations on two-year centers, when you take the two-year moving average, LA County boat registration is, is increasing. And the boating industry shows year-over-year increases since 2014 and expects an even better 2016 year, including Southern California boat vendors. Seventy-seven percent of retailers expect growth in 2016. The city's assessment doesn't account for the attractiveness of King Harbor. We have the fastest ocean access of any harbor. We're a proximity to some of the best fishing grounds in Southern California, and it's a very straight and short shot, shot to Catalina. So it fails to look at the attractiveness of our site. And the Mole, Mole B solution ignores this future demand. Next slide. Now we dive into public health and safety. There's a number of safety impacts here. And CEQA requires that if there's a direct or indirect impact to human beings, from a safety perspective, those findings must be significant. Well, the proposed bikes paths dramatically increase the potential for both pedestrian and vehicular collisions. Forcing toddlers to play in untreated harbor waters increases the risk of exposure to pathogens. The breakwater rocks that bound either side of the new Seaside Lagoon represent a hazard for toddlers. And forcing recreational users into smaller co-located areas increases the risk of injury to recreational users. And this is primarily in the Seaside Lagoon area and in Mole B, where we're forcing all these uses into a very small area. The EIR ignores these public health and safety impacts. This shows the, the new bike path. This is from Center Cal drawings, and you can see on the left, starting at the bottom where you come off the, the current bike path along the beach, there's a dangerous ninety-degree turn right at where Torrance Boulevard Circle is. And then you have to cross this long, broad area where, where people have historically dropped off pedestrians to go into the harbor area. And buses drop people off there. Then, there's no safe entry from Torrance Boulevard. There's nothing that shows how you get on the bike path from Torrance Boulevard. So if you're coming down Torrance Boulevard, how do you hop on that bike path? undefined. Then you've got to cross the brand-new Collector Road right at the entrance and exit to the, a driveway for the parking structure. And if you look, it's, it's within, you know, just a few yards of where people would be turning right to go back to Torrance Boulevard from the parking structure. They're going to be looking left to see if traffic's coming at them. They're not likely to see bicycles that are cutting across, that have to cut across that new road. And, and the same on the north end. You've got a new access to the parking structure on the right there that you have to cross now. Then you have to do two ninety-degree turns to get on the bike track. This is what we just paid five million bucks to remedy with the bike track, and it's just ludicrous. The EIR is silent on these hazards. Seaside Lagoon, untreated water. The FEIR included water, due to comments in the DEIR, we've, we've been at this for three years. Finally, after the DEIR, they took a one-day water quality sample in April of the harbor. One day does not show you what the exposure is to the public of toxins in, in the harbor. And in fact, it was a day when the outside ocean waters were rated an A. So I would expect the harbor to be good quality. But what it did show was the two test points that were in the swim area had two and a half times more pathogens, indicator pathogens, than the tests that were taken in the open fairway and nearer to the harbor mouth. So it does show that the swimming area would be more contaminated than the open ocean waters would be. The DEIR relied on samples taken south of the pier, and this was in response to a public records request. That water fails testing twenty-seven percent of the time. And that's in both wet and dry conditions, so it's not just rainwater runoff. The DEIR speculates it's birds around the pier. Well, there's a lot more birds in the harbor than there are in the pier. Just look at the rocks. And every time a wave hits it, or the tide changes, they're washing that bird poop right into the harbor where you're expecting kids to swim. And that doesn't even get into the seal poop that will be coming off the barge, and we all know the seal problem in the harbor. The water sampling north of the harbor, even though it wasn't included in the city study, fails twenty-five percent of the time. And you can see this from NRDC studies or from Heel the Bay. Heel the Bay puts out a warning, "Avoid enclosed beaches." They recommend people not take their toddlers to enclosed beaches. Bacteria levels are usually higher and tend to survive longer in duration in enclosed beaches. And that's supported by the evidence from the city's one-day testing, again, where the pathogens, the indicator pathogens, were two and a half times greater in concentration in the swimming area than they were near the harbor mouth. They recommend avoiding Dana Point Baby Beach, Marina Del Rey, Mother's Beach, and Cabrillo's Inner Beach. So why are we forcing kids to move from a chlorinated environment that kills these pathogens into a, into an untested environment that after three years, we still don't know what we're pushing the kids into? I think that's just a travesty. We're supposed to be looking out for public safety, not, not guessing. And the EPA says children and the elderly are the ones most likely to be impacted by swimming in contaminated waters. Next slide. EIR attempts to avoid the impact. They attempt, you know, they, they say capturing the water runoff would improve water quality. Well, that's only during rainy conditions in the winter, when this is likely not to be used much anyway. But then they ignore the fact that it only, that, that capture system only works up to three-quarters of an inch over a twenty-four hour period, and then it's dumping the raw water back into the harbor. It ignores, it implies that tidal flushing would improve the water quality, but flushing the water where you swim with poor water quality outside is not going to do anything to improve that water quality. If I put a big purple dye in the ocean around the harbor, and then I put dye in the, the swim area, you think it's going to change over a forty-eight hour period with tidal changes? No, because you're going to be washing the purple dye from the ocean right back into the harbor. You can't clean dirty water with more dirty water. The DEI avoids any assessment of contaminants coming from tidal surge and wave action on the breakwater rocks, or the impact of the seals and the sea lion barge, which is just upwind of this site. Next slide. The total potential exposure is huge. The city believes that eighty-one thousand people, the same number of people, would still use the, the Seaside Lagoon in its reconfigured state. Otherwise, it would be a significant impact, because you'd be decreasing access. So last year, that's eighty-one thousand daily guests, six hundred day camp kids, and over twenty-five thousand special event guests would be exposed. So the total exposure potential is huge. And the EIR employee, implies that because it's open twenty-four by seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year, even more people are going to use it. So it's ludicrous that we're forcing people into the waters and saying that we're going to accommodate more of them, when we haven't even tested the water. And then, the EIR calls for weekly testing. The CUP only requires monthly testing during the summer and quarterly testing in the winter. So if you go, two days after the test is taken, you can be pretty assured you're swimming in, in clean or dirty water, but between those times, you have no clue. You're, you're, you're basically playing the you have no clue. You're, you're, you're basically playing the roulette wheel with your toddler. Next slide. The traffic analysis ignores capacity limitations. Um, there's extremely narrow lanes. This is an old picture, I don't, didn't have a current one, but anybody who's driven down there knows the, the lanes are extremely narrow now. Uh, there's sharos, shared lanes on the road, and the average bicyclist rides at, uh, just under 10 miles an hour. There's no turn pockets on a lot of, on, on the driveways. Um, there's the impact on both the driveways and the intersections of the bike and, and pedestrian traffic. The Harbor Commission complained about this extensively. And then there's minimal, minimal turn pockets, even if you expand them, at the, uh, at the actual road crossings. Um, at that, um, center turn lane, uh, that's near Barrel, I experienced regularly conflicting turn movements where people are trying to get, turn left into the marina, and people coming south wanna turn onto Barrel. So you see these cars come head-to-head, and they're at a standstill, 'cause the ones trying to get in the marina can't go forward to turn in the marina, the ones coming south can't get around to get to the left turn lane in, in, and, uh, for Barrel. And then it ignores the fact that you're gonna put a big parking structure for a shopping mall right on that corner, and they only have one road to circulate around. So if they drive through that and they don't like what they saw, if you've been at a shopping mall, you know people circle to try to find better spots. They don't like it, they're gonna pop out, they're gonna go back onto Harbor Drive and come through the system again. That wasn't evaluated in the, um, uh, analysis. And finally, there's show, short road segments with limited storage capacity. In fact, the picture that Aaron showed of PCH and Herrando showed cars stacking up across the Catalina entrance because there's not enough storage there. None of these conditions were evaluated in the study. And in fact, you know, if, if they had accommodated these in the study, you would think they'd come back and say, Mr. Light's wrong, here's where we accounted for each of these things in our calculations. They've never done that. All they've said is, hey, we identified some, some bad spots and we mitigated them. Doesn't say they identified all of them. And this shows that, that, that they left a lot out. In fact, the, 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 the volume capacity that they use was 1,600 vehicles per lane per hour, which is the same as what they use on PCH. And it's ludicrous to think that this area can handle the same level of traffic as PCH. Next slide. So, but you don't have to believe calculations. You can go down there and look at the, um, at the conditions today to see that the, uh, uh, calculations , uh, understate the impacts. So this is, uh, the 24th of July at noon. You can see this is, uh, just near, um, Captain Kids, the entrance at Ruby's there in the parking lot, is backed up through Barrel. It's backed up through Barrel. Now, now, now according to the calculations, this, this condition shouldn't exist today. And yet, it's a regular occurrence. If you drive Harbor Drive, you see cars backed up, not just here, but at the entrance to Spectrum when there's, on the hour, when there's new classes and stuff like that. This is a regular occurrence that's not accounted for in the study. And then the other side shows traffic backing up Torrance Boulevard, uh, just before the entrance to the parking structure. And then the other picture below it shows that it's so backed up that it's impacted the right turn lane coming off of Catalina. So these are overflow conditions. These are the, this is, this is traffic breakdown, and the, the analysis did, does not account for these conditions that are occurring today. Now, double the traffic, and yeah, you can put in a couple of short turn lanes and road segments, it's not gonna change the basic traffic infrastructure and the impacts. Next slide. Uh, and then we're starting, we, we see a lot of bias creeping into the analysis. The, the Mole D DEIR analysis says that there's, uh, because it's located near the mouth of Basin Three, there could be a traffic conflict. And then they say because professional boat captains pull up to the sport fishing pier, that's a potential safety hazard. A professional boat captain going up to the sport fishing pier. But in the Mole B EIR assessment, with a, somewhere around 500 to 600 boats with recreational boaters in there, using a very narrow fairway, and dumping the traffic into the fair, directly into the fairway, they say, oh, the timing would smoothly introduce the, into the arrival and departing, uh, Basin One boat traffic. And there's sufficient visibility to avoid contact, uh, conflict, and that they'd manage it to ensure safe operating conditions. You can see, this is a blatantly flawed analysis. This is not an, an apples-to-apples comparison. And let's go to the next slide. This shows any, any beginning boater could look at this and see the difference. I mean, you look at the picture on the left, and you see you're dumping right into the fairway, and you can see there's crammed with boats all around it. On the right, you see the, uh, the, uh, two different configurations of where the boat ramp would be in Mole D, and you can see how far it is from the actual fairway, and the main harbor fairway, and all that maneuvering space, and the fact that Basin Three only has 60 boats that are captained mostly by either commercial fishermen or professional captains. And they, they evaluate, the one on the right is dangerous, and the, the one on the left as okay. It just doesn't, it just doesn't bear any scrutiny. And it shows the bias that's creeping into the analysis. Next slide. Mole B ramp safely. You've had numerous people comment on this. Mark Hanson, who's been around the harbor for years, opposes this, and has questioned why we're rushing into this without workshops. Uh, the safety was, was questioned by Commissioners Kaiser and Callahan. Callahan is a licensed 100-ton boat captain, so we should give her some special heat on that. But the rest of the commission ignored her, with the exception, Kaiser's a lawyer, and she questioned it. Um, and then former Redondo staffer, Tim Dornberg, after years just retiring, uh, came out very opposed to this for safety, uh, reasons. And, and he's, you know, he said the outcome, whenever they evaluated us in the path, Measure B, I mean, Mole B came down so far on the list that he was shocked that it was being talked about. And then we've all seen the recent, uh, Beach Reporter article where Norm Matt came out against this and said he would never support, uh, a, a, a boat ramp at this location because it's dangerous. But the EIR says it's okay. Next slide. Uh, this is, I'm not gonna go through these. These are other, uh, uh, safety professionals from our harbor who have testified again, who have submitted testimony, uh, opposing a Mole B boat ramp location. And same, this is Tim Dornberg's actual, uh, email on the subject. Next. Masking and scale, um, you know, this, it says it, it, it matches what's in, uh, surrounding areas of the harbor. Yeah, maybe if you cross the street, you can kinda get there. Um, but if you're in the harbor itself, the masking and scale is just a joke. All you have to do is look at Center Cow's own model to see that the masking and scale is a huge increase, and it's, it's not, you know, Portofino's not this massive. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, Port Royal Marina doesn't have anything close to this. Even the pier doesn't have this level of density. Uh, so it's ludicrous to just say, there's no masking and scale problem here. You can see the, on the picture on the lower right, the, uh, urban canyon that's created by this development. And in the upper right, you can see the wall of development that will be faced by anybody driving, riding bike, walking or jogging along Harbor Drive. And to say that's not an impact is, is a travesty. It's a, it's a joke. Next slide. Then, public views. Here's a picture. This is not a doctored picture. This is a picture directly from the sidewalk, um, uh, right in front of Crown Plaza, but on the far side, uh, the west side of the street. You can clearly see the cliffs of Palos Verdes. You can even see Catalina out there to the right, and you can see the open ocean. Uh, and then the picture to the right is a very simple site analysis, this isn't hard to do, uh, that shows that 85% of the current harbor views would be blocked from Harbor Drive. Even the heart of the city, EIR, which actually had less density in this portion of the harbor, called this a significant impact. So it's just ridiculous that, that we're denying that it's a significant impact. Next. Um, and then, then going into the actual proceedings, the Harbor Commission rushed to judgment. Two of the commissioners complained that the project was incomplete and, and the EIR analysis was incomplete. Several commented that Mole C had been very well vetted, but Mole B had not been publicly vetted at all. And two had problems with the safety of Mole B. Um, as we went through, as we listened to the proceedings, several commissioners commented that their decision wouldn't matter because the matter would be appealed. Commissioner Blasst in the minutes is quoted as saying, "It is likely the Harbor Commission decision will be appealed to the council." She agreed another discussion is necessary, and suggested that if the EIR is certified with the Mole B recommendation, council will have another opportunity to discuss. That's not, that's not her job to guess whether we're gonna appeal or not. It's her job to, to make the determination at that meeting, and to say that it needs further review, and then to vote against it, uh, to vote for passing the EIR when she said it needs further review is, is, is a dereliction of her duties. Uh, and the, and the easy reader quote, "The bottom line is that irrespective of what our vote is tonight, it'll be appealed to the city council." And several other commissioners made the same, the same statement as they went through. So these folks were charged with making a decision of whether this would go forward or not, not to second-guess whether we'd appeal or not, and whether you guys would have another chance to hear this. [applause] Many issues and details were not covered. Uh, I'm unable to, to cover all the issues and documents approved by the Harbor Commission due to time constraints, and I'd put everybody to sleep. Uh, sorry for the details that I've been doing. The appeal and other submittals cover in detail the broad breadth of the shortcomings of the Harbor Commission decision, including violations of CEQA, violations of the California Coastal Act, and violations of our own land use policies. The city council should approve the appeal, repeal the approvals of the Harbor, uh, Commission, and send the project and documents back for rework to address all the issues. Failure to do the right thing drives us to only, the, our only recourse is appeal to the Coastal Commission and file a lawsuit, because the clock starts ticking as soon as you make your decision, and we, we would abdicate our right if we don't follow up on it. There's substantial, I've provided substantial evidence that there are blatant flaws in the EIR, uh, that it's incomplete, and that we violated some of our own land use policies and certainly the Coastal Act. Supporting the appeal is the prudent path for the city, the people, and the project. And I'll close with saying, um, you know, again, this was a very detailed discussion, and I appreciate the time, but this really boils down to three things. The lack of compromise over the last three years, um, the lack of balance in the project that we see before us now, and the fact that we're starting to see bias creep in, into the city's evaluation as, and I just gave a few of the examples, but there's many more. Um, so again, I appreciate the time, I appreciate the hearing, and I, I, I really don't look forward to coming back up on the 30 minutes I have at the end, but it's part of the process. Uh,
You came in, you got, you got like 17 minutes to spare.
I know, I, I intended to get away, I know, but my counsel, do you guys wanna say anything in my 17 minutes?
If this slide's in the, um,
Well, go to the, I gotta go to the podium.
We've got 17 minutes.
It just takes away from the response time.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Yes. Well, then, um, we have just, uh, two additional, um, sort of issues that are related to this that we wanted to very briefly pointed out. Um, one concerning the application of the city's CEQA ordinance to this process, and the other one, the trust
State your name for the record, please.
Pardon me? Yes, my name is Frank Angel. I'm counsel for building of Battle Redondo and Jim Light. By the way, uh, we consider that, uh, both and others are appallants because provisions of the ordinance that, um, uh, staff relied upon to strike arbitrarily certain appallants from the appeal, uh, obviously arbitrary and capricious. There's nothing that prevents different appallants to join in one appeal. And for an ordinance to say that is not allowed without citing any reason makes absolutely no sense. So, uh, this being said, uh, as a fallback, um, if you do not, uh, if you're not ready to proceed with the requests that Mr. Light now has done to this evening uphold the appeal and overturn the permit decisions and the EIR certification of the Harbor Commission, here's another, uh, alternative fallback, uh, position that we have been making, and that is, um, your decision tonight would also be, uh, the integrity of the hearing, the integrity of your review process is tainted by staff's use and heavy reliance on the CEQA ordinance on, in this case. And that goes to our letter where we have showed that the exhaustion requirements that, uh, preclude, that require the city council not to consider any issue that has been raised less than seven days before the hearing, and to not consider issues that have not been raised before the planning commission, or before the Harbor Commission in this particular instance. Those provisions are in flat-out violation of CEQA and case law that have interpreted CEQA. And in this case, the result is even, uh, more absurd given what you would just heard, that several planning commissioners passed the buck to you, and then staff says, but your ordinance, uh, prevents you from accepting that ball that's now being handed over to you because, uh, it was up to the planning commission to define the confines of the issues that can be raised. There is not a city that I have appeared before, uh, in the state of California where CEQA applies, that has these shackles and limits on CEQA review. This is completely untenable. So that's, uh, that's the point that I was making, and therefore, we, we suggest, uh, as this, as a fallback, that you postpone this hearing and ask staff to actually, uh, address the issues that they just said, "We don't even have to procedurally consider this, uh, because this wasn't properly raised or sufficiently raised before the planning commission." These are all legal gobbledygook theories that don't apply, uh, at the level of administrative local governmental review. These theories have merit once they are in court. But the courts, they look at what the issues are that have been raised before the elected legislative body, because they say the CEQA responsibilities ultimately, the buck lies with the elected public officials, and they have to consider all the issues that have been raised. So, uh, with that, I, I have, uh, our associate, Angel Law Law Clerk, Ellis Raskin, address the public trust issues associated with the project, which are unrelated to CEQA.
And for the record, I think he was referring to the Harbor Commission, correct, not the Planning Commission.
Uh, that's right, the Harbor Commission.
We got, we got that, yeah.
Uh, Honorable Chair, my name is Ellis Raskin. I'm a law clerk at Angel Law. And before I begin, I do want to submit, uh, for the record, a, um, letter to which Mr. Angel just referred that was emailed to you, but I'd like to submit hard copies as well.
Your motion, a second. Sure, turn them in.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, so I do want to touch on, uh, very quickly, uh, the issue of the public trust doctrine. Um, now, as you may know, California has a broad, uh, common law public trust doctrine, which holds that, uh, tidelands, navigable waters, uh, and other such public resources are held entitled by the state in trust for the enjoyment and preservation for the people. And that includes ecological preservation, that includes preservation of access to recreational opportunities, uh, and, uh, many of those are very much at play in this project. One, because much of the development is located on tidelands, which are by definition held in public trust, and also because this project involves, uh, development and use of navigable waters, uh, including, for example, Basin Three, which is, uh, by definition, a public trust waterway. Um, so it is, uh, overlooked to a large extent, um, in, uh, the discussion of the Harbor Commission. Uh, so it's important for you to include in this hearing a discussion of whether or not, uh, public trust uses will be negatively impacted by this development. You have to ask seriously whether ecological resources are protected for the public benefit, whether recreational opportunities are protected for the public benefit, and here, clearly, they are not. Uh, to give you one striking example, uh, the seaside lagoon is one public trust resource located on public trust tidelands. And here, the project proposes to open, uh, perfectly safe waters, which are, uh, protected from pollution and toxins through the process, uh, process of chlorination, and instead, expose the public to further toxins and more toxins, uh, by opening it up to the polluted harbor waters. Uh, that is a clear violation of the public trust doctrine. You're exposing people to toxins, that's harm to the ecological resource, and people are gonna be turned away from recreating there, which is a further violation of the public trust protections for recreational uses. Uh, the seaside lagoon is one perfect example of that. Uh, I also want to, um, mention also that the project proposes a tideland swap that is, uh, wholly inconsistent with Public Resources Code Section 6307 requirements for tideland swaps. Uh, here, the project proposes to swap Basin Three for a parcel of land located on Mole D. Uh, the idea being here that Mole D land would be taken out of public trust protections so that you can build whatever you want there, give it to whomever you want, alienated from public protection. And instead, you give to the public trust Basin Three. The problem is, is that Basin Three is already protected under the public trust because it's a navigable water. Uh, so that tideland swap clearly doesn't satisfy, uh, the requirements of Public Resources Code Section 6307. Uh, for that matter, Section 6307 requires a net gain to the public trust. Here, there would not be one. Uh, it does not satisfy the Public Resource Code protections. Um, but, uh, as a basic matter, you really have to ask yourself the ultimate question of whether or not this project protects the ecology, uh, protects the right of the people to enjoy the coast. It protects the people, uh, the people's right to enjoy these, uh, these scarce and ever-shrinking, uh, resources and access to the coast. Uh, and clearly, this project does not do that.
Okay.
So just to, just to close up, I did forget one comment I wanted to. Uh, Aaron showed some comparisons to the densities of the waterfront in Hermosa and Manhattan Beach. Uh, last time I checked, uh, they don't have- Last time I checked, they don't have a harbor. And so comparing their waterfront, they don't have Seaside Lagoon, they don't have boat slips, they don't have stand-up paddle docks and all of that kind of stuff. So comparison to a waterfront of a different city that doesn't have a harbor is not, not a valid compare. That's, that's apples to oranges. And in fact, I would want to keep our densities lower than those two cities. I don't aspire to achieve the density of Hermosa, Manhattan Beach, Santa Monica, or especially Marina Del Rey. So that should not be our goal. And with that, I do thank you for the time. I thank you for taking this seriously. I thank Mike Webb for coordinating this. I appreciate the attention that you're paying to this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, if we could, I know it's, you got the urge to clap, but you know, just, let's keep it down because we can just keep this thing moving along very smoothly. Thank you for your, your, thank you for putting that on for an hour, under an hour or two. Okay. Now, I believe it's time for Center Cal and anybody you want.
Good evening, Mayor Aspel, members of the council and members of the Redondo Beach community. My name is Fred Bruning. I have the honor to work with a wonderful group of people called Center Cal Properties. Our headquarters is up in El Segundo. And almost four years ago, it was our honor to be selected to be the proposed redeveloper of the Redondo Beach waterfront. I know that everybody perceives the waterfront from their own filter. Everybody has their own memories, their own recollections, their own sense of what a waterfront should be. In my case, we could go to the next slide. I remember being on the waterfront since I was about four or five years old with my dad. We'd come down fishing from Cerro Madre, and the waterfront was kind of a bustling place back then. I mean, there was a lot of activity, there was a lot more activity along the water back then in the fifties, certainly than there are today. My view of the waterfront, but is also informed if you go to the next slide, from the air. I spent a lot of time flying out of Torrance over the waterfront, and this picture was actually taken this past Labor Day at three o'clock. When you look at the waterfront, I think you can see from this vantage point the level of densification around the waterfront. You can see up into Hermosa Beach, you can see Torrance to the south, you see a couple of parks, which is wonderful because it's great to preserve parks. But basically, the waterfront is, has always been designed to be a, a commercial waterfront here since the eighteen-seventies. It was always a place where you could come and see a movie at the Fox Theater, you could go to roller coasters. I mean, over the generations, there have been many different uses on the waterfront. And this is another picture I took at a slightly different bank angle, but this, again, was at about three o'clock on Labor Day. You can see the lagoon, and what you really see as you look from the air at the waterfront is a massive asphalt surface parking lot. Environmentally, to me, that's one of the worst things you could ever have on a waterfront. And so from our filter, taking this perspective, we tried to apply some principles when we were selected. This is a quote from the trust, this is actually from the Project for Public Spaces. "When a public space is an asset, it takes on the neighborhood's identity, becoming its star attraction and raises the quality of life for residents." Well, when you think about it, I mean, how many residents view this as the star attraction of the city of Redondo Beach today? And how many, you know, how is it raising the quality of life for its residents? So many people we've talked to in Redondo Beach seem to have turned their back on the waterfront and don't go there much anymore. When we were selected in two thousand and twelve, we were asked to do a couple of things by the city council. What we were given was a mandate to take the redevelopment of the waterfront and incorporate the standards that were set forth in Measure G. So we met with city staff, we met with several of the councilors at the time, and tried to determine what those standards were. And I think we've remained true to those standards for the four years that we've been working on this project. Vision statement, again, what we want to do is we want to bring the community back to the water and closer together. Clearly, there's a lot of division in the city of Redondo Beach, but there's also a lot of different aspects for whether you're in District Five or District One. I don't want to sound like Hunger Games here, but you know, it would be great if we could create a gathering place that would work for the whole community, a gathering place that would welcome residents and visitors alike to, to the waterfront in Redondo Beach and do it at the appropriate scale and types of uses. Now, we've had an awful lot of meetings with the community. We started out, once we were selected, by staging some very large public meetings. We had eight of those. By the end of those meetings, we were hearing a lot of the same comments echoing, so we thought, let's try to change the format a little bit. We started doing a lot more smaller meetings, coffees. We met with the Kiwanis, we met with the Rotary Clubs, we met with the Realtor groups. I've been in at least a hundred homes in Redondo Beach, talking to residents, talking about things. And we have heard a lot of different ideas. We've heard a lot of things about what people would like to see in the waterfront. We've heard more access to the water, more walkability. We've heard less surface parking, less park, you know, just kind of surface parking lot, dog-friendly, year-round lagoon access was a big thing because, again, the lagoon is only open about three months of the year, other than for special events, and the rest of the time, it's a walled-off fortress. During the time that we were evolving this plan, we did make a number of changes. We, you can see a certain area there that circled where we actually added more view quarters, we added more transparency off our new waterfront drive to water views along the lagoon, excuse me, the lagoon. We did bring back the sport fishing pier because we thought that was an important thing, and that was our suggestion. We thought, you know, meeting with the Turks and such, that, you know, Poli's deserved a new lease on life, you know, on a new pier that actually could serve as a water taxi location and provide additional access to, to the water. We tried to strike a good balance. Our project is only twenty percent retail. We have twenty-four percent of the project as a boutique hotel. That hotel is almost half of our expanded area, but it only has a hundred and twenty rooms. So it's not a large traffic producer, but it adds a really nice level of experiential excitement, I think, to the overall waterfront. We have twelve percent creative office. We heard comments about creative office earlier. We think that's also important. We have thirty-five percent food and beverage and nine percent entertainment. So a good mix that I think adequately services what we'd like to see, at least from our filter, at the waterfront. The other thing we have here is a lot of open space. Now, currently, there's about five-hundred thousand feet of asphalt parking lot on the waterfront. Our project takes that down to about a hundred and thirty-five thousand feet. And in addition to creating new buildings, we also create a lot more very usable public space. So we have parks, we have walkways, we have access that's greatly enhanced to the lagoon. And I think if you look at this, you can see we've got a nice connectivity, we've improved the overall experience of the waterfront, I think, dramatically. If you look at the economics of our project, there have been two studies done that I think have been presented to the city council. It's always good to have a belt and a suspender check. The first study was done by Jeff Green Partners, the second by ACOM. The two studies both agreed that this project will, in all events, be successful. And essentially, if you look at the ACOM study, it says, "The plan has a density consistent with other South Bay, Beach City, downtown districts." And in this case, I'm talking about places like Riviera Village, you know, and such. If you like Riviera Village, this is very similar density to what exists there today. And it does provide bicycle access, walking access, improved connectivity, and expanded opportunities for coastal recreation. If you look at the benefits to the community of our project, I think those are, you know, all you have to do is walk the waterfront to see that it needs a lot of work. It's been neglected. I think the total improvements, if you look at everything, including sea level rise changes that need to be addressed, are over a hundred million dollars. On the other hand, if you look at the benefits to the city of our project, three to six million dollars in additional tax revenue to the city of Redondo Beach, about twenty-five hundred jobs that would be created, not only during construction...